Presentation and Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Good afternoon. Councilmember Scott Benson.
Scott Benson, aye.
Councilmember Fred Durhal, III.
Present.
Councilmember Letitia Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Gabriela Santiago Romero.
Uh, she did indicate that she would not be present today, so her absence is excused.
Councilmember Mary Waters. Councilmember Angela Whitfield Callaway.
Present.
Councilmember Coleman Young, II.
Here.
Council President Pro Tem James Tate.
Here.
Council President Mary Sheffield.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
All right, there being a quorum present, we are in session and we will turn it over to you, uh, Mr. Mayor for the presentation of the proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty, twenty-two, five, twenty-two, six budget.
Thank you, Madam President, members of.
Mr. Mayor, just to make sure your microphone.
I need to spend more time with you. Thank you, Madam President, members of, uh, City Council. Uh, I am in front of you for the twelfth time and for the twelfth time, uh, I am presenting a balanced budget for the city of Detroit for the upcoming fiscal year. I want to start by recapping where we stand on this year, the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Uh, our revenues are running very strong. We are actually running seventy million dollars ahead of projection in the existing fiscal year. It's a huge difference from, uh, days past where councils would adopt a, an artificial budget and then miss the revenues. Uh, we are over twenty-two million dollars in income tax collections, thirty million dollars in gaming collections, seven million dollars in property tax collections. We're also two million dollars under an expenditures. Uh, so for the eleventh straight year, we are going to finish this fiscal year, uh, with a surplus. Uh, and I'm even more pleased at what is happening on the reserves. I'm very conscious of the fact, uh, that I want to leave to future administrations, uh, a budget that has cushions against what may come. And so again, we are proposing a hundred and fifty million dollar rainy day fund. Those who were here during the grand bargain legislation know the state of Michigan required us to have a five percent reserve. By state law, we have to have a seventy-five million dollar rainy day fund. This council has supported a commitment that we've doubled that. And so again, we will be at a hundred and fifty million dollars. In addition, uh, by June thirtieth, we will still have three hundred and fifty million dollars in the retiree protection fund. It's one of the most extraordinary acts of fiscal responsibility I've seen, uh, that through the years, council every year with pressure, uh, for a lot of needs, put aside that money to protect the pensions. Uh, and we have fifty million dollars in liability reserves. Basically, in addition to a balanced budget, we have five hundred and fifty million dollars in reserves. This city, uh, is in, uh, good shape. The, uh, reason that we are financially so strong is our income tax revenue performance. And if we can put up a chart, I want to show you why, um, we are doing so well today. The red line that that chart shows is that in twenty-fourteen, when I was required to testify in front of Judge Rhodes in the bankruptcy court, I, he would not let the city out of bankruptcy unless I testified that I believed that the plan we have could be achievable over the next ten years. And I committed to income tax growth of two percent a year for the next ten years. That was a little bit of a leap of faith because the income taxes had done nothing but decline. That red line shows that if we had gone from two hundred and forty-eight million dollars at the time we came out of bankruptcy and income tax collections and grown two percent a year, the budget I would be showing you today would be three hundred and twenty-four million dollars. Instead, we have had extraordinary performance with the business development, people moving in. We have actually averaged seven percent a year. Uh, and, uh, we are going to have this year four hundred and seventy million dollars. That hundred and fifty million dollar difference in income tax collections is the reason we could give police officers ten thousand dollar raises and add three hundred and thirty cops. It's the reason why our parks look so beautiful. It's the reason why the ambulances are showing up in seven and a half minutes. Uh, these are the services. And I, and I want to say this to City Council. We are in this situation because of the courage of council. And anyways, you bear the grief of this more than I do, but it is because this council has recognized that the choke point in this city's development has been our property taxes. When we have eighty-six mills and the suburbs have half of that, almost nobody is going to build their business in the city and pay twice as much as taxes, which meant the only way we could recruit these companies was to give them discounts. Uh, and you've done it. Everybody up here has supported one or more of the projects that has done this, the, the Jeep plant with the four thousand plus employees, uh, over on Mac, uh, the Ford train station. They just moved two thousand, uh, executive staff into that train station and the hundred and thirty startups on New Lab. Again, was not an easy vote for this council. The book building now has three hundred families moved in, two little Caesars office buildings in District Detroit, Amazon, which was another source here. Now it's two thousand six hundred people at the fairgrounds and Vinnie Johnson is bringing in another three hundred, uh, in an auto supplier to that property. Of course, we have the high-rise Huntington Bank Building, uh, and the Studebaker, uh, building is now occupied on Paquette with housing. And in almost every case, members of this council, uh, had to deal with the factual inaccuracies of people saying you were giving money away. The truth is, the city of Detroit does not give money away. What we do for development is discount if people invest. And this was the vision from the day Coleman Young set up the Downtown Development Authority in nineteen seventy-five. He realized property taxes were never going to be a good long-term source of running the city. He thought it would be the income taxes. And, and if you look at this, we've gone from two hundred and fifty million basically to five hundred million in twelve years. There is no reason, if this city continues on this course, it doesn't double again in the next twelve years. We could be at a billion dollars in revenue if the city continues to do what we've done. Think about all the things that haven't even come to fruition. The Convention Hotel is rising on the waterfront, recently approved by this council. Almost a third of conventions in America will not consider you if you don't have a hotel attached to your convention center, which Toledo does and Lansing does and Grand Rapids does. The value of that, we're going to see for years to come. The Hudson's Building, second tallest building in the state, hasn't even opened with its hotels and its residences. The two billion dollar Henry Ford construction hasn't opened yet. They're still building it. The U of M grad school is rising out of the ground and they're about to start on the accompanying housing. Uh, what Greg Jackson and Richard Hosey are doing with the residential at Fisher Twenty-one is under construction and of course, what Roxbury is doing at Lee Plaza. If this city continues on the same, uh, course, we're going to be fine. And of course, together, uh, we are going to have to before the end of this year, I hope, deal with, uh, one last issue and that's going to be the Renaissance Center. I do not want to leave behind a legacy, uh, at the Renaissance Center like administrations and councils did over the year with the Packard Plant and the Ford, uh, or the train station, uh, or the Hudson site. And we have to work through to get an answer. So as far as the twenty-two, six budget, we are again proposing a seven percent increase in revenues. Uh, you can read about cities across America that are, are cutting back and laying off because Detroit is doing well. We are projecting another seven percent increase in revenues for the upcoming fiscal year, basically going from about a billion five to a billion six or about a hundred million dollar increase in revenues. Through much of the last decade, we listened to hand wringing from the skeptics who said, oh my God, Detroit is going to hit the pension cliff in twenty-twenty-four. It's going to be right back in bankruptcy. But because this council set aside the funds in the retiree protection fund, here's what we have. We are going to go on our pension contribution from seventy-two, from seventy-six million dollars last year to eighty-two million dollars this year. Our increased contribution is only six million dollars from the general fund. This is the value of the foresight of what this council did in the retiree protection fund. And we're going to continue to see that kind of increase. So when you have a hundred million dollars in revenue go up in a six million dollar increase in your pension contribution, it reflects an extremely well-managed city. So, uh, what are Detroiters going to see if council adopts the budget that I propose? The first thing Detroiters are going to see is a big property tax cut. Uh, and I think this is going to be good news for Detroiters. So if we go to the property tax cut page, um, so what, um, uh, two years ago, I came here and said our debt mills would be dropped from nine to eight and this council gave people a one-mill tax cut. Last year, we did it again, went from eight to seven. Because our property tax collections have been so strong and we have managed our debt, we are in a situation this year to do a three-mill tax cut and take the debt mills down from seven to four. For the average Detroit, if you own a house that's worth a hundred thousand dollars, that is a hundred and fifty dollar a year tax cut to you. You can figure out what your cut is, up or down there, but a hundred thousand dollar house, it's a hundred and fifty dollar a year tax cut. This doesn't affect our operations. This doesn't cut into any of our services. This is money, uh, that is being saved because we have paid off our past debt and don't have to keep making that payments. And I'm pretty sure, um, given where we are, uh, a three-mill property tax cut, uh, is going to be welcome. A lot more needs to be done to get our property taxes in line to the surrounding communities. Uh, and I suspect a mayor down the road will successfully pass a land value tax to fix this once and for all. Uh, but right now, I think a three-mill cut is a step in the right direction. The next thing Detroiters are going to see in this proposed budget is a major increase in D-Dot service. The single biggest dollar increase we are proposing is a twenty million dollar increase in the D-Dot budget from a hundred ninety to two hundred and ten million dollars. The key to this is the new buses, which council knows are on order. We have bought forty-five new buses. They are scheduled to start coming in in late summer and will come in through the end of twenty-twenty-five. This is going to allow us to put the service on the road. Today, we are running a hundred and seventy-eight buses a day. When all of the buses come in, we will not be running a hundred seventy-eight, we'll be running two hundred and twenty a day. We're going to hire sixty-three more drivers and twenty-four more mechanics. And here is the thing that I feel best about. The highest level of service we had before the pandemic was two hundred and fourteen buses a day. By January, we're going to be running two hundred twenty. We will be running more bus service than we had, uh, before COVID hit. Uh, it's been a long road back. Uh, we have the right director at D-Dot now and the right support now, but if council supports this, uh, we will have, uh, the kind of increase that we should have. Now, future years increases are going to depend upon what's happening in Washington. There's talk about seizing, there should be another thirty-five buses coming in off of federal formula money the following year. Uh, we're going to have to watch what's happening in Washington because right now it's caught up in money that's being stopped. But the forty-five are on order, the thirty-five for the next year, we're going to have to fight for. The next increase I want to highlight is an increase in funds for the homeless. Last year, this city council, for the first time as far back as we have records, uh, approved general fund money for our homeless services. Historically, we got six million dollars a year in federal homeless money and we spent six million dollars a year. Together, the mayor and council said, we're going to double that. And we added six million dollars in general fund money, so we had twelve million dollars. And that allowed us to add the, uh, the immediate shelter housing, the hundred and ten beds and the outreach. As we have learned in the tragic circumstances, uh, this month, we need to do more. So we're proposing that that general fund contribution go from six million to eight point four, uh, and that we double the number of immediate shelter beds from a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty. We increase the number of outreach workers as part of the plan, uh, that I outlined yesterday and the Julie Schneider and Malia Howard, I'm sure we'll be discussing with, uh, council going forward, uh, but we have to increase the funding on these homeless services. The next item was one I didn't expect to have to put in this budget, uh, but we have to to keep it going and that is we're proposing four point four million dollars in general fund money to keep our community violence intervention program going, our CVI program. Uh, council approved the CVI program with American Rescue Plan money. We put six organizations out. Uh, as these organizations know, I'm a metrics-driven person. Five of the six had excellent success, driving the violence down below the rest of the city by personal conversations by trusted members of the community. One of the six wasn't effective, we've dropped them, uh, but we have five. I wanted to add two more. Uh, and, uh, last June, with the support of the governor, uh, Alabas Farhat and Joe Tate successfully, uh, got approval for seventy-five million dollars in a public safety trust fund across the state. It would have meant eighteen million dollars to the city of Detroit, but it would have meant money for more cops than Lansing, m- money for m- more mental health respondents in Grand Rapids, money for public safety in Pontiac and Flint and Saginaw, uh, in, in all across state. Came through the House of Representatives. First, the money got appropriated, money sitting in account. I wanted a public safety trust that worked like revenue sharing, where the money came automatically year after year, you didn't have to lobby for it. The House overwhelmingly adopted it. It went to the Senate last summer. It sat in the Senate and died the last day of session. We are in a bizarre situation in which seventy-five million dollars for public safety is sitting in an account in Lansing appropriated and it is not going to any of the cities. The mayor of Lansing and Lansing City Council are up there now saying, we had twelve cops planned in our budget that we can't hire because you have not, uh, adopted this. Uh, the four point four million will be enough to continue our five groups at their base level. Won't allow the bonus funding, which is a key part of this, but it will at least keep them going. It won't allow for the expansion. And if there is one thing that I could ask and I hope you would think about doing, we need every member of this council advocating for this public safety trust fund. If you were at the Democratic Convention last weekend, you saw who was doing it, it was our CVI groups, it's our activists who are in the street every day preventing the violence. They put on their orange sweatshirts, they had to go to a Democratic Convention to demand CVI be a Democratic priority. I never thought I'd see the day that we had to work that hard. But here's the reality, with the redistricting that occurred, uh, when Senator Young was in there, he primarily represented the city of Detroit. With the redistricting that has occurred, we have a lot of senators who have a little piece of Detroit, but a lot of the suburbs. Uh, Senator Sylvia Santana has been a force in lobbying for this all the way along, but we have not had the advocacy that you would hope for. Uh, and I think it is critical, uh, that we, uh, push for this. And I would remind council, what happens when the mayor and the council do this together? In twenty-fourteen, in the grand bargain legislation, Governor Schneider proposed, uh, proposed legislation that said the city of Detroit would be under state oversight for the next twenty years. The legislation that he introduced and some of the members here were up in Lansing at the time, guaranteed twenty years of state oversight. And I said, okay, you could have your twenty-year provision, but I want another, I want an amendment. I want a provision that says we can earn our way out of oversight if we balance our budget three straight years, pay all our bills, have access to the credit market, give us a chance to earn our way out. Council President Brenda Jones and I went up to Lansing and testified for that amendment and all eight other city council members sat in the chair behind me and we were unified for that. We got that amendment through. The reason the city of Detroit is not under financial oversight today is because the mayor and the council stood together in twenty-fourteen. The homicides in this city went from four hundred in twenty-twelve to two hundred last year. We're down double digits this year. We can see the day when this city has fewer than a hundred homicides. Boston last year had twenty-eight. We're using their strategies, but we have got to have the CVI folks on the grounds in the neighborhoods, combining the outstanding job the police department's doing with its work and its technology. I anticipate that Representative Farhat, who is now the lead Democrat in the House Appropriations Committee, uh, and is our sponsor, I anticipate that he is going to get it back in in the House. I think we're going to have bipartisan support out of the House, uh, and I think it will move again. Uh, but to get this through the Senate, the governor has been terrific. But one of two things is good, is happening. Uh, either we get the public safety trust through or we are not going to have the kind of expansion of the CVI program that I'm pretty sure everybody in this room would like to see. Uh, two final points of significance. I am again proposing ten million dollars in supplemental payments to our retirees, five million dollars to the police and fire and five million dollars to the general fund employee in the form of a thirteen check, as council did, uh, last year. And there's one more thing that I'd like to talk about. Um, we are proposing twenty-one million dollars in blight removal. Those who are here will remember the plan of adjustment required us to spend for ten years, fifty million dollars a year for blight removal. Uh, and I'm pleased to this year only be asking for twenty-one. And let me show you the reason why. Uh, we're putting up the slide now on proposal N, which is coming to conclusion this year. The voters of this city voted seventy-two percent in twenty-twenty to do a two hundred and fifty million dollar bond issue. And during that campaign, I committed to voters that if they adopted this, we would demolish eight thousand land bank houses and we would renovate or sell another eight thousand, that that would do the job. As of today, we have demolished seven thousand four hundred and seventy-two. By the end of this year, it'll be eighty-two hundred. And so far, we've sold eighty-eight hundred because property values have improved. By the end of this year, we will sell well above ten thousand. By the end of this year, almost every land bank house that needs to be demolished will be demolished and they'll down, be down to about a thousand they have to sell. Want you to think about that. The land bank had forty-seven thousand abandoned houses when we started. It'll be a thousand at the end of the year and they will all, uh, be able to be sold. There will always be some small number as, as houses come back that didn't get fixed up or, or that are taken at some point in the future. But the fact of the matter is, for the first time ever, uh, we have as a city dealt with the backlog. Our problem with abandoned houses now is not the land bank. They are privately owned. There are emergency demos, they catch on fire, people walk away. Uh, they, people have abandoned them and either B seat or city council declares them dangerous or we have commercial, uh, buildings. And so what we estimate this year, and the one council will take you through the details, is about five hundred residential houses coming down and they're assuming about ten commercial buildings will come down on an emergency basis. Because of what we did in the American Rescue Plan, there's no more Packard Plant, it's, it's down. Uh, the Cadillac stamping plant is gone, the AMC headquarters is gone. Uh, and, uh, the Mammoth Building, I know council member Tate, council has already appropriated the money for that and the environmentals are being done. The big commercial demolition has been done. Uh, the money in here is for the emergencies, uh, as they arise. So those are the highlights of what we have in the budget and, um, Madam President, members of council, uh, I will, uh, answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Mayor, for that presentation. And as, uh, the public should know, we just received the budget this morning and so we have not been able to go, uh, through this massive book, uh, line item by line item, but we will be doing that over the next few weeks. Uh, so we will probably just kind of have high-level questions today as we just got the presentation.
Madam President, I'm sorry, I'm just reminded by the team up here.
Yes.
Uh, who actually knows far more details of what this book that I have.
Yep.
Uh, that they have, uh, uh, some other things to share. So if I could continue with, uh, the, uh, what's that? Whatever you want, whatever, uh, whatever council would prefer.
Yep, so we'll do questions and then we'll come back to you all.
Okay.
Um, so I am glad to see that you, um, definitely have increased the homeless service outreach. And I know right now, uh, Detroit, uh, is national attention on the issue of homelessness in the city of Detroit. And I think we all need to figure out what more we can do. And I know you mentioned, um, your seven-point plan in addition to adding additional drop-in, um, centers or, or, uh, drop-in sites for people who are experiencing homelessness. Uh, my concern is really the issue of, uh, families and children that are facing homelessness in Detroit. It was reported that between twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, children face the largest increase in homelessness across the country and even locally, uh, and that the number of children experiencing homelessness last year, sheltered and unsheltered, reached the largest in a decade. And so I guess my question is just what more we can do aside from the drop-ins? I think the issue is, as we talked about privately, is permanent supportive housing and it's a temporary city solution with the drop-in. I think it does address people being sheltered, but what more innovative approaches are we doing to address permanent supportive housing for those who are experiencing homelessness? And I'll just lastly say that I know numerous people have ideas. Uh, we have talked about several times turning vacant commercial structures into housing. Uh, and I just think I want to hear more about what we can do to address it from a permanent standpoint to provide more, uh, housing to those who are experiencing homelessness.
Well, of course, with the support of this council, we built a billion too in affordable housing in the last six years and permanent supportive housing i- is a critical piece of that. And so, uh, council president, as you're keenly aware, we move folks from the street or from an unstable situation in somebody's house to a shelter, uh, and if they don't return to private housing, we move them to permanent supportive housing, particularly if they have addiction issues, mental health issues and the like, where they can stay for a period of several months and there are, uh, the kind of supports, uh, that you want. Uh, Julie Schneider and the team will take you. There are several more of those, uh, in the pipeline. Certainly, what this council did on the pilot ordinance is going to speed up, uh, the building of affordable housing in the city. In fact, I, I should tell you, but I think they've already had almost forty, uh, applications, uh, based on the pilot, uh, for affordable housing. But we're open to, uh, every suggestion that there is. Uh, as, as we've talked about, I, I, we have a tragedy of a family in a van in a parking structure where we were not looking for them. But by and large, if you are on the street, our outreach folks will get you to shelter. The numbers that you referred to are people who are staying with somebody else out of economic hardship. They are considered sheltered homeless because they don't have a permanent situation. And this is going to be our ongoing challenge. What do you do with a family with two kids that is temporarily staying with somebody else who says you need to move on? We added two hundred and fifty regular shelter beds last year. The continued expansion of permanent affordable hu- permanent supportive housing and affordable housing is there. And, and I think, um, Julie Schneider and her team can show you everything that is in the pipeline. We don't have any shortage of buildings. In fact, what you did on the pilot ordinance was you gave, uh, extra credits for people who renovated, uh, existing buildings. We just need to, to keep, uh, keep pushing. We billed a billion too. We need another billion, uh, to keep ahead of this, uh, keep ahead of this curve. And we just need council to keep doing what you've been doing and approving these projects.
All right, all right. Thank you. Um, definitely looking forward to further discussions with HRD as they come before council. Uh, and then lastly, I have not had a chance to look into right to council. I also read the story of Ms. Williams and the family and she lost her rental assistance at one point in time. Um, and, uh, I'm assuming it was evicted. Um, and I thought about how right to council could have played some role in that process. And so I want to know the state of right to council in this budget. I know we primarily funded it through ARPA, but where are we with in the efforts to continue that program, uh, into this next, next fiscal year?
To the best of my knowledge, the issue was not eviction. It was a, uh, family situation that changed, but again, there's a lot of personal stuff there. But as far as right to council, I'll leave it to my colleagues to tell you exactly where we stand on that.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
So with right to council, those dollars were added to the budget a couple of years ago. And as those dollars are not used, we actually bring them forward every year. So those dollars are still fully available in this budget for, for those services. So there haven't been any increases, but the dollars that we originally added there are still part of the budget, so they're available for those services.
All right. Looking forward to more discussion on that as well. And, uh, I will now turn it over to my colleagues and everyone will do two questions per council member to start off and I will start with Member Callaway.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. Um, I have a couple of brief questions. I'm really excited, well, good afternoon and thank you, Mr. Um, Mr. Mayor. The property tax mileage reduction, three, um, the three mill, that's very exciting. A hundred and fifty dollars a year for those who own a home and a hundred thousand dollars, that's, that's good. That's a lot of progress in my estimation. Um, so thank you for that. Um, the drop-in, I think people probably would be more likely or comfortable to, um, drop in at rec center? Have we thought about using rec center as warming centers, twenty-four hours, seven days a week? Because if I were homeless, I wouldn't go to a police department. I would be nervous. I would be apprehensive to go into a police department for shelter. I think, uh, especially with children, it just has a negative connotation, even though it's a safe space. But I'm hoping we could look at using some of our rec centers for that same purpose. And also the precincts, but I'm thinking, um, we need to look at using our rec centers, especially the Northwest Activity Center that's. the Northwest Activity Center that's accessible. It's on a bus line, a very, very busy bus line. The Myers and the Curtis buses run regularly over there, so transportation, you know, wouldn't be a hindrance. But have we thought about using our rec centers for those warming centers, not just in emergency situations, but on a regular, continuous basis?
We had for quite a while, the Joseph Walker Williams Center, we used in that way. And I had enormous complaints from the community and not being able to use it as a recreation center. But people do not get to our immediate shelter centers just by going to a police precinct. Although 25 people in the last two weeks have gone to the police precincts. But we have our outreach workers on the streets 24 hours a day. We have our police officers, unsheltered team, on the streets 24 hours a day. The great majority, and we have people who call into the call center, the great majority of people who are going to the family drop in center, the immediate shelter center, are coming from those other sources. We have not turned a single person away since December 16th from the drop in centers. And if we double this, I'm confident nobody will be dropped turned away next winter either. I don't think the problem is a shortage of facilities. At least in this case, the problem was a communication, unfortunately, that services, I don't know if we communicated them as thoroughly as we we should have. But at times, we have turned rec centers in, and I would say, there are other council members who can tell you, there is a significant problem in the community when they lose their their rec center.
When they lose access. My first, when I first spoke, it was just a statement regarding the three mil. That wasn't my question. My second question has to do with the number of lawsuits that we're seeing every single week. I serve on the Internal Operations Standing Committee with Member Johnson and Member Waters, and we're talking multiple millions of dollars in settlements against two departments, DPD and DDOT. I read in an article today, one is two over 200 and something million dollars in settlements. And I think I read also where there are, I think, some departments are instituting new risk policy management plans. What are we going to do about the number of settlements, DPD and DDOT? It's a huge problem in the city. And if we can take that 200 million dollars and put that in affordable housing, we wouldn't have a housing problem. And that's my question, just the lawsuits. And what are we doing in terms of risk management, safety, and all of those components that could go into addressing these settlements that we're having to do and having to vote on every single week, sir?
There are two different questions. DDOT, I understand, is finally trending down. They put in huge safety initiatives, and I think you need to ask them that question. And and hopefully, we are vigorously defending these cases the way that we should. It is very hard in these DDOT situations to determine who was really on a bus, puts in a claim, and and Corporation Council can talk about that. What has happened on the police cases are are these wrongful conviction cases. And this is something that that when I was a prosecutor, I never thought this was fair. But you'll have an individual who 20 years later says, the police officer did this, the prosecutor withheld the information, my defense attorney was incompetent and didn't represent me, and the judge didn't listen to the evidence, handled the case wrong. And you know what? That judge has absolute immunity. That defense attorney has got basic immunity. The prosecutor has absolute immunity. We have got wrongful conviction cases where what the police officer did was a minor piece of it, but the city of Detroit ends up with 100% of the liability because of the way the law is structured. And I think we need to take a serious look at that. It's something the Corporation Council is looking at. But 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 your problems, your problems are problems, are largely the wrongful conviction cases, which in in some cases, there's a legitimate issue against the officer, and other times, the issue is not the officer, it's somebody else in the system, and we have the liability.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Callaway. Councilmember Benson?
All right, thank you. Thank you for being here today. And once again, thank you for delivering a balanced budget, something that we didn't have in the past on a regular and reoccurring basis, something that maybe it's a it's a blessing. But since I've been here at this table for the last 11 years, we've done nothing but balanced budgets. And so that's all that I know when it comes to municipal government. Looking at one of the major issues that we hear from our constituents, and especially those who take public transit, is the need to expand service. I see the highlights, 19.9 million dollars in expansion via increased investment, including 117 more FTEs and capital improvements when it comes to buses. How much of this $20 million is reoccurring, and how much is it one time capital?
Oh, no, it's all recurring.
Okay, so we will see.
Has to go into the base.
$10 million reoccurring.
In fact, it'll have to grow next year, because if you think about this, we will be to the full 220 bus fleet on the January run pick. That's the way the drivers do it. They have every three months, they pick, and we expand service when they make their pick for the next quarter. But that's halfway through the fiscal year. So the reason it's only $20 million this year is because we're ramping up. Next year, to sustain that, it will take another increase.
Do we have a proposal for how much?
When when the DDOT folks get here, they can tell you what it would cost to run 220 buses a day. If we could get more, if the Trump administration doesn't hold it up, I'd like to see, but this won't be my decision, it'll be other people's decision a year from now. But we need to get to 230, 240, 250 buses a day for the kind of service we deserve.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Member Benson. Councilmember Waters?
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon. Let me first say, Mr. Mayor, that yes, I was one of those at the State of the State the other night, and I'm going to do all that I can to massage those relationships and lancing so that so that it will certainly help to get to Detroit what we need. I wanted to just kind of, and Madam President, I already asked a question about right to council, but I just want to know if you could tell me, how much has spent been spent to date, and what is the trend that you see that they will spend per year?
Through the chair, to Member Waters, I don't have those exact amounts, but I do want you all to keep in mind that because these are ARPA dollars, they do have to be spent by December of 2026. So we need to make sure that we're tracking that very closely. If we need to expand the scope on how we're using those dollars, that's something that we could do. But you're right, we need to make sure that we're aware of how much is being spent annually so that we can get those dollars spent before the deadline.
Okay, all right. This this is a generic question about how we how we measure outcome within various departments. Have you have you considered basing the amount of money that you allocate to the various departments based on performance? Have you considered looking at that?
Yeah. The departments are all rigorously scrutinized on metrics. And if you ask them what metrics they are being scrutinized, how they're doing, they will be able to tell you sometime with painful experiences. But yes, we are very much focused on who's performing and who's not.
Okay, well, I guess that answered my question, huh? All right. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you, Member Waters. President Pro Tim Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, team. Thank you for the budget. As has been mentioned, haven't had a chance to go through it yet. So just a couple of questions, just top of the head. I know we've got a number of challenges as it relates to our young people obtaining illegal substances from some of our businesses within the city of Detroit. Many times, we, as a city, go to enforce, and it takes this long to actually get a shutdown or get to get it tested, to identify if that substance is exactly what we think it is. Is there anything in this budget that addresses this issue to close that window, to be more prohibitive for these businesses that are providing these illegal substances to our children?
You sound just like Chief Bedison. And so between B seat and the Law Department, he has been quite insisting on more help. And I think those are conversations you should have with them, because it doesn't do any good for the cops to come in and do it once, and then a week later, they are selling again. It's got to be supported with with B seat ticketing and ultimately, suspension of business licenses and legal action. And I agree with you, I know the chief agrees with you, and I think it'd be a really good issue for you to explore with those three departments in the course of this budget process.
Yeah, because I'm looking at even our own testing. Right now, we have to go through MSP, and then we wait. And other kids are probably being sold too, et cetera, et cetera.
You know, if you wanted to suggest to the chief a lab with testing kit, I think he would probably be very welcome to that. He is very focused on this issue.
All right, it's on my list. The other thing is, when it comes to the B seat inspectors, and we look at the condition of properties, commercial properties, where we have apartments, and sometimes it's even in neighborhoods where we have single family dwellings that are owned by unfortunate and the slum landlords. Is there anything in this budget that ramps up our enforcement and our abilities to reverse the situation that we're seeing unfortunately in many people's situation?
You know, this council has dramatically increased the number of B seat inspectors over the last few years. Whether it's enough or not, I think it's something that you ought to explore with Dave Bell, and he can tell you, he's got one group that goes to apartment buildings, one group that goes to our auto lots, one group that's in neighborhoods and residential conditions, other groups that are going down the commercial corridors. And and you should explore with him how many people are assigned to each, and whether there's a need to enhance that.
Anything as far as your, even your team can talk about currently?
Yep, through the president to Pro Tim Tate. So what you'll see in this budget is that previously, there were positions that had been ARPA funded. The inspectors have now been transitioned to the general fund. So you know, they had a number of vacancies as well in B seat. So what we've done here is we've actually transferred those positions now to the construction code fund. So now B seat has filled quite a few of their vacancies. We have not reduced their number of positions, so they'll be able to continue to fill positions. But all of the ARPA funded positions have now been transferred over.
Okay, looking forward to the conversation. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Pro Tim. Councilmember Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, team, welcome. Always good to see you guys. I I just wanted to ask you, first of all, I kind of want to piggyback off the question that was asked earlier about housing. I just want to know, after what happened, that was so unfortunate, and we can never have that happening again, and that's unacceptable, I think we all will agree with that. I just wanted to ask you, do is it reflected in this budget, the issues dealing with that? Was that more of a outreach issue? Was it more of a, was it more just somebody just falling through the cracks and we didn't get them issue? And then I also want to ask, is it reflected in the budget, the housing solutions for that? I know in South Carolina, they built tiny homes for people that didn't have that. Are we looking at tiny homes? Are we looking at prefab houses? Are we looking at 3D printing at all? Are we looking at a combination of all? Are we looking at transit oriented development, which is building housing around transit projects? And is that reflected in the budget that we have currently?
The beauty of what this council did in what I would call the autopilot ordinance, where you gave people the expectation of property tax cuts if they made 15 year commitments, they can bring any and all of those proposals forward. And they now know that that they are basically treated like a nonprofit health clinic and that they don't have to be paying taxes, they provide these services. And so I I think you should talk to Julie Snyder and the team about the 40 or so projects that have already come in. But in this case, we built the right system that opened on December 16th. We have a system that any person who was found on the street who wants shelter immediately is taken in and not turned away, and they stay there until we find longer term health. The tragedy on this is, and I've talked about this before, the last contact that the Williams Curry family had with our housing group was in November. The new system went into place in December. They never knew, we never found them. And and now the Detroit Police Department is looking in all parked cars. We were not focused on on cars. We were focused on places, on the streets, sidewalks, hallways, and the like. We are very much focused on those cars today. But with this increase, I'm confident we can move people, everybody who's on the street who wants to be in shelter, I'm confident we can move them from the street to shelter. The question council president is asking is, what about somebody who's on somebody's couch, where they're saying, you can't stay here much longer? That is a much bigger challenge that the long term housing is going to have to fix.
Well, I was just talking about not just the short term at all, so the long term return to housing as well, and trying to close the, I think right now, the the gap between the houses that are available and the houses that are needed is like 9%. I don't know the exact number of that, but I was wondering, is there a plan over five years to close that?
I'm telling you, this this autopilot ordinance, when you see the projects coming in, I think you will find, I was up in Traverse City at their Northern Michigan group, and I told the local cities who all complained about affordable housing, what this council did on the automatic pilot. And I got shocked. They said, what, you mean you don't make every single person covered in front of you and go through a log process to get a tax break? Right now, every affordable housing developer in this state knows that the city of Detroit is the easiest place to build affordable housing because of the pilot ordinance you adopted. And I really think you're going to look forward to the conversations. I think they've just now opened the pipeline and are starting to award them. But they were very pleased with the number that came in.
And then my my other question I want to ask, I wanted to ask you, have we had, we talked earlier about the property taxes, and I just wanted to come at this from a different angle in terms of a commercial property taxes, small businesses. Have we had an analysis in terms of how much property taxes we would have for small businesses that started up but didn't because of overregulation? I mean, it takes 77 steps to start a restaurant, 60 steps to start a barber shop, 43 steps to start a food truck. I mean, for a restaurant, you got to go through 15 different forms in order to do that. Have we had a conversation about reducing those steps?
Oh, yeah. So you got to get.
And what impact that would be in the budget, property taxes?
You got to get Marcus von Kopf in here, our chief operating officer, but his number one mission in his life is the statistics you just said. His assignment right now is to show me what city in this state has the fewest and most efficient steps to open a business, match it to the city process, and you explain to me every step and every fee that's in the Detroit process, why does it have to be there? Marcus is leading that process right now. I completely agree with you. It's better than when we started. You used to have to come down here and go to four different doors at City Hall. Now you can do it online. But it but council member, I agree with you completely. It needs to be fixed, and I hope you ask Marcus some really good questions about where that is.
No, I do, and I'm done. I just wanted to say, because I know we are, we are, we have more steps than everybody else start a restaurant other than Boston.
It is ridiculous, and we're going to fix it.
Thank you, Madam President, I'm done.
Thank you, Member Young.
Thank you.
Member Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm in my head right now, right? Housing is something that I have been really trying to delve deeper into to not only understand it, but to understand what's needed in order to address all facets of housing. I know, so you've mentioned the pilot ordinance several times, and I, during that during that process, had some reservations relative to the pilot ordinance, because my focus has been on homeownership, and how do we, when we think long term relative to housing, and we address someone who's homeless, take them through the process where we provide permanently supportive housing, but then ultimately, the only way to address the fluctuations in rental rates is for someone to own a home.
Right.
And so I know when I first got into office, we talked about providing financial support to nonprofit organizations for them to be able to rehab houses, to offer them at a lower cost. And we had some conversation about utilizing ARPA funding, and that was not something that you were interested in doing. But when I look at the.
That's not true.
Well, I thought, okay, so it's not something that happened, I will say that, okay? But so we're we're looking at the Blight Removal Fund of $21 million. How do we utilize some of that to rehab houses, to provide some support to rehab houses so that we have houses that are still here that we can move people into as we make progress from being homeless to owning a home? And move, maybe shift 10% of our efforts from apartments and providing units, apartment units for individuals to reside in?
Yeah, so we have been doing this in so many different ways. Of course, the Rehab and Ready Program at the Land Bank has renovated a large number of vacant houses and and put them out. We, of course, have had almost now 13,000 abandoned houses in this city that were bought and have been renovated by individuals. And on the down payment assistance side, of course, we have about 400 homeowners there. I have always been. been receptive of a package that says, let's get X number of houses to nonprofits, uh, let them take some and with some amount of money, show what they can do. And you need to have a conversation with Julie Snyder. I don't know how many times I have to say yes. Uh, but for some reason, between yes and getting a nonprofit to get to an agreement that, yes, I wanna take this on for this amount of money, somehow we don't seem to be able to get there. I'm happy to sit in a room again, uh, but I've been in agreement with this idea all along.
Okay, so let me ask you. So, are you saying the blight removal funds or are there funds within HRD that can help support?
If you cut the blight removal funds, you are going, Jerry Kavanaugh sat here in 1962 and said he was gonna get abandoned houses out of this city. And this city has never had the will to go through with it. If you cut the blight removal funds, the, the abandoned houses are gonna start spreading and growing again, just like they have since the 60s. So, uh, we have two different questions. One is, should children be able to grow up in a city that's blight-free, which I think the answer to that ought to be yes. And the second is, I am in favor of nonprofits taking houses and fixing them up and renting them out long-term. So far, we don't have an agreement where a nonprofit says, you know what? For this amount of subsidy, I can afford to rent this at a low rate for 15 years. But I'm in favor of the concept. But bring them in the room and let's make a deal.
I, I appreciate the concept, but do we have the dollars to support it?
Again, the question is, how much and where? I thought it was in the $200 million of ARPA money that we, we set aside. I can't tell you why an agreement has not been reached. All I can tell you is, I've said yes five times.
Okay, alright. So, I'll need a sixth time then. So, so-
I'm with you.
And, and, and I'm with figuring it out because I'm, you know, focused on the details and trying to figure this, um, solution out. But I will say, I do appreciate your support relative to Community Land Trust. And I know that you have articulated that. We're working, uh, with you and your team through that process. So, we go through with a fine two comb, um, so that we don't have to keep going back and forth on this and that we actually implemented or did that.
So that I'm on the record, I've said yes to Community Land Trust five times, okay? I, I'm in favor. Let's, let's get a deal.
We're, we're working on it. Um, and so appreciate that. Um, the other question that I will ask is relative to, um, the taxes, the millage rate. Um, certainly appreciate the three-mill reduction. Um, and we've had a number of conversations relative to how do we generate revenue, additional revenue, uh, in the city of Detroit as it relates to folks that come and patronize facilities downtown, whether they live here in the city of Detroit, in metro Detroit, or if they are tourists. Most metro areas have a tourist tax. And we have been trying to get a study done for a local option sales tax. We understand everything that goes into implementing it, but the question is, is it even worth going through that process? And so, last year, we talked about doing a study to identify that, to determine that. But it seems like there was something that happened that caused it to stop moving forward. Um, and so, my, my overall question is, so we talk about the downtown area and the support that the downtown area has had. And, you know, my background is in working for the Convention Bureau to bring tourists to this city, to support our hospitality and tourism communities. And I tell people all the time, you'd be surprised at the number of Detroit residents that work in those industries and supported by all of these venues that are downtown and in metro Detroit. How do we get our tourists to support this development that we've seen?
So, uh, the, there are tourist tax levies for the convention center, for the stadiums, uh, and actually for, for some addiction prevention issues, uh, that hotel taxes, uh, go for right now. The issue is this, cities cannot invent their own tax under state law. The state of Michigan has to authorize it. If it's a sales tax, you actually need a statewide vote to amend the Constitution. Council President has suggested an entertainment tax. That could be done, uh, by the act of legislature. It is a very difficult thing for Detroit to go to Lansing and get a, a statewide vote of people for a tax. You've got three former legislators up here, uh, but I think the obstacle is the political reality of that. But I think your, your three former legislative colleagues probably give you more insight into that than I can.
And was that different from LVT? Was it-
Same thing. I didn't, I didn't get the land, right. It was the same thing as land value tax. And of course, you saw that didn't get through either. And it, it hurt the city terribly. But, uh, what's going on in Lansing, I'm gonna try to deal with it a different way.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Member Johnson. Member Durhal?
Thank you, Madam President, and, uh, good afternoon to you, Mayor, team. Uh, uh, very excited to hear about the 4.4 million going into CVI. I know we had a brief conversation, uh, about that, uh, due to the Public Safety Trust Fund dollars not coming in, a little bit of uncertainty, even if we get it through the House, it being stalled in the Senate. Uh, hopefully, we can see some type of resolution to that very quickly. But I do wanna applaud you on that because I think it will at least give us some time and a cushion to be able to get that figured out, uh, in Lansing until the funds come down here where we can truly make that program, uh, sustainable. Uh, I, I do wanna touch a little bit on a huge issue that folks talk about, which are property taxes. Um, uh, when we talk to folks, uh, who are residents here, uh, in the city of Detroit as well as business owners, uh, a lot of folks feel that folks don't pay their fair share of taxes. Uh, when we see the number of buildings that have been demolished, and even you mentioned, uh, that what, pretty much what the holdup could be is a lot of those are privately owned. And we've got speculators sitting on a land. Uh, I'm in agreement, uh, that a land value tax is good. Um, uh, with that, and excited to see the three-mill cut. Uh, my question is, though, with our five, uh, projected revenue sources to backfill that three-mill cut, are we concerned that there may be, or is there any uncertainty that we'll be able to backfill the three mills?
So, so we don't have to backfill because this is debt service. And so, we've been paying down the bonds. We don't need, uh, seven mills anymore because part of it is our property tax revenues went up. We paid down the bonds faster. Uh, and we weren't borrowing more money. So, there's nothing to backfill. Uh, we only need four mills to make those debt service payments.
Okay, and, and that is great news, uh, uh, for that. Uh, my second question kind of revolves around, uh, $14 million for alley cleanup, commercial corridors. Um, I, I'll tell you, I rode down Dexter Avenue today. Uh, glad to see what is happening on there. But even as we talk about the facades and some of the upgrades that have happened in these commercial corridors, can we talk a little bit about what's in this budget really to kinda expand that, uh, noting that for our commercial corridors, uh, and for folks who want to maybe come and invest, they wanna see a greater opportunity. They wanna see something, uh, that is not, uh, necessarily torn down. Can we talk about that?
So, through the chair to Member Durhal. So, what we're doing is, we've actually, GSD is one of the few departments where we're actually able to add additional dollars specifically for those purposes. So, we have additional, um, contractual funding. We actually have additional folks in order to, uh, do more of those corridor cleanups. So, that's been, uh, ARPA priority for us. And it's also now a general fund priority for us as well.
Okay, and, and not, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Uh, and ju- just to follow up on that again, um, wanna see vibrant commercial corridors, walkable neighborhoods, uh, in that area. Uh, I was, again, I was surprised. We were riding down Dexter and an abandoned building has been sitting on the corner for so long. Now it's painted black. The facade is upgraded. And it's just a breath of fresh air, uh, frankly, for those corridors.
What Katrina Crowley is doing is amazing. Uh, and she is relentless. And, uh, we're putting more money in. And again, this is what this deliberative process is for. You should ask her about what she's accomplishing with the dollars she has and, and, and make priority decisions. But you're right, with the, the resources we've given her, and it was mostly ARPA resources, she's made a huge difference. The, the rusted fences in this city that are gone, the busted out signs that are gone, uh, it is, it's been remarkable.
And, and finally, just a statement, uh, again, appreciative of you guys bringing this budget as we are gonna tear it open a little bit, uh, within the next couple of weeks. Um, very interested to hear those discussions, uh, as we go pretty much to a status quo budget. Uh, we don't have 827 million dollars of ARPA funding now as we're looking towards the future. Uh, and I anticipate us sitting here at this table are gonna have to make some decisions based off of priorities of what we want to fund, noting that we're, uh, in a kind of a status quo, uh, type of budget.
Um, Mayor, can you talk about any remaining ARPA money and how that might be shifted?
Yeah, uh, uh, it's basically been allocated as a small amount and, um, I, and, uh, they're working through that now, but it's, uh, a minimal amount. It's not a significant part of this budget.
How does this budget compare to years past?
Yeah, and we have 7% revenue increase. The income taxes in this city have doubled, uh, in the last 12 years. And it's put us in a position where we can give officers $10,000 raises. We can hire 330 officers. We can keep, uh, the parks looking beautiful. And we had another strong year of revenue. Um, so, we're financially in good shape, uh, and we need to upgrade our D dot services. We need to upgrade our homeless services. And we're able to afford to give Detroiters a, a pretty significant property tax cut. I think it's gonna be a good year.
Could you talk more about the property tax cut?
Uh, so, uh, because we have been paying off our debt early, uh, we are able to cut three mills, uh, off people's property tax bills. So, if you've got a $100,000 house, that's a $150 tax cut, uh, you'll be getting if council adopts the budget as I proposed. We've cut the taxes the last two years, a mill each year. This year, it'll be three mills. So, it'll be a total of a $250 a year tax cut over three years.
Is that for the debt millage, part of the millage?
Right, it's a debt mill, yeah.
Yeah.
We're paying down the debt with, with the rising property values in the city. Uh, we're paying down the debt faster than we projected. And, uh, that's put the city in this really strong, uh, financial shape.
What was your main focus with your 12th and final budget? And what's your message to the residents here in Detroit?
It's been 12 years, 12 balanced budgets, investment-grade, uh, credit rating, and the city's got $550 million in reserves going forward. City Detroit's in very strong, uh, financial shape. And I'm confident the next mayor and council will keep it going in this direction.
Mayor, did I read correctly that this is a total of a $3 billion budget?
So, so it's a billion and a half in the general fund, and then the rest are the water and sewer and road funds, uh, and the like.
Okay. Is there any area that's, uh, where money is being shifted out of it to make room for growth in other departments?
I don't think so. I mean, we, there are areas, most of the departments are status quo. There are some areas, uh, with significant increases. And it's again, because we have a 7% increase in revenue, which is extremely healthy, we were able to put more money into D dot, more money, uh, into homelessness, more money into community violence interventions, the priorities I think the city needs.
What are some of the challenges?
Um, you know, I, I think what the governor said about tariffs is a concern to all of us. Uh, you know, we have eight or 9,000 people working in the Jeep plants, more than 4,000 people, uh, in, uh, Factory Zero building the cars for GM, and thousands more in supplier plants. And Ontario is a huge part of our supplier network. This is all one, uh, supplier network. If, if we really do have 25% tariffs on parts going back and forth across the border, uh, it's gonna be devastating, uh, to Michigan. I think right now, that's our biggest risk. And I'm hopeful that the President is gonna reach an agreement with Canada and that this will not be an issue. Other than that, um, things look very good for the city of Detroit.
Mayor, on CVI, you were talking about some legislation that is pretty crucial to it. Could you elaborate a little bit on how much that would impact?
Right, right. So, there are two different pieces. You need an appropriation, and then you need to create a public safety trust fund that works like revenue share. Last June, the legislature appropriated $75 million for Detroit, Grand Rapids, Lansing, Pontiac, Saginaw, Flynn, et cetera. The House passed the trust fund bill that would allow the money to flow. The Senate, uh, uh, did not. And so, the $75 million is sitting in account for public safety in the cities of this state. And it's going to sit in that Lansing bank account until the legislature adopts the trust fund bill. And I'm hopeful that that happens, uh, soon. But right now, every city, uh, is, is being hurt by the fact this bill has not passed.
So, in the meantime, is the city gonna have to use general funds or?
Yeah, and so what I proposed was that July 1st, we use 4.4 million of general fund to keep the CVI program going. Otherwise, it would have shut down. But, um, our, uh, CVI groups have been so effective at preventing gun violence, there's just no way we could let it shut down. And so, I'm proposing we use 4.4 million in general fund just to keep it going.
To you, what is the most exciting aspect of this proposed budget?
You know, in the 1990s, I ran the smart bus system. I knew what good bus service looked like. And we don't have it right now. Uh, but I think getting the buses from 178 a day to 220 a day, as we will over the course of this fiscal year, I think that'll probably be the most noticeable, um, service improvement to most Detroiters.
What's the biggest priority for you in this budget?
I, 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 yeah, I gotta, yeah, we gotta fix D dot. We gotta fix the homeless services. And we gotta cut property taxes. And that's what we did.
Uh, Mayor, do you, um, expect there to be prob- additional property tax cuts in future years? Is there a certain rate you'd like to get to?
You're going to, if you can figure out who my successor is, you need to ask him or her that question. Uh, so somebody, it does need to keep going, but, um, this is my last budget.
And whoever your successor is, what do you hope that they continue to work on that you've been doing the past 12 years?
You, you know, for the last 12 years, it hasn't just been me. It's been the city council. Uh, our city council for 12 straight years has taken a lot of heat, uh, and adopted responsible budgets, which is why we are where we are. And I hope that culture, uh, continues, uh, in the next administration and the next council. And I'm confident, uh, that it will based on everything I'm seeing so far.
This is your last budget. Can you compare what the budget looked like when you began to now?
The day of my, uh, first budget presentation, uh, half the streetlights in the city were out. The parks were all closed. Uh, the ambulances didn't show up for an hour. Uh, and there were 47,000 abandoned houses in this city. It was a, a city that didn't have a lot of hope. It is a very different, uh, city today.